Dr. Head, are you in the meeting now?
I am. That was fun.
Okay, yeah, that's the best way to put it. I'm gonna be working on another one real quick. Let me get the PowerPoint started and we begin the meeting again.
All right.
The recording has begun.
Okay, thank you. It's 3:13 PM and we will reconvene the regular board meeting. Desiree, do we have any folks who signed up for public comment?
Yes, Chair, we do. We have two today. We are gonna start with John Bergduff. Link, if you can find him in the attendee list and move him to a panelist, please.
One minute here.
Sure.
I know I saw him in here earlier. John, you've been moved up to a panelist to speak. Please unmute yourself and you can begin.
Great. Hello, good afternoon, everyone. I am Dr. John Bergduff, President of AFT Lone Star College. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today. Salaries are the bread and butter of union concerns, and therefore I want to speak on behalf of our local in favor of the salary increases included in the college budget for fiscal year 2022. As stated in the agenda, the new budget calls for a 2% cost of living increase for all employees other than the adjunct faculty with a minimum increase of $750 for full-time employees. For adjunct faculty, the budget proposes an increase of $2 per contact hour, which will translate into an increase of over 4.5% for most adjuncts. Given the financial roller coaster that all of us have experienced over the last 16 months, this is very welcome news. Lone Star employees understood and accepted that cost of living increases were impossible for fiscal year 2021, the year which is about to end. We were grateful for Chancellor Head's commitment that full-time employees would not lose their jobs, and given the turmoil that many of our friends and neighbors were experiencing, this promise was more than enough. In fact, although AFT Lone Star often appeals to the board and the administration in favor of cost of living increases for employees, we decided not to do so for either 2021 or 2022. It was not right, we believe, to ask taxpayers to shoulder raises for us while many of them were in dire straits. It is good to learn that the financial impact on the state budget due to COVID was not as bad as expected. It is also gratifying that thanks to years of financial responsibility, the college was able to weather the storm better than one might have feared. It is extremely good news that because of this, the college will be able to afford a salary increase for employees. Our part-time staff and adjunct faculty have been hit especially hard this year as fewer classes and fewer work hours have been available at Lone Star and as outside employment opportunities evaporated. We are especially glad to see that these valuable employees have been included in pay increases. Because the pandemic is unfortunately far from over and there is still much uncertainty, the magnitude of the salary increase proposed is prudent. We in the AFT can defend these numbers both to our members and to employees at large, and we will do so. Our only ask is that as the coming year progresses, we keep a close eye on rising costs for goods and services. I often bring up the Consumer Price Index, a standard measure of inflation. The government is reporting a 12-month increase in the CPI of 5.4% from June 2020 to June 2021, with the vast majority of that increased since February. Many economists believe that this substantial uptick may be temporary, reflecting problems in supply chains and staffing in limited sectors of the economy. However, if this rate of increase holds for a substantial length of time, employees will feel the consequences. We are extremely grateful for 2% for fiscal year 2022. It is more than we hoped for, and I cannot sufficiently stress that. All we ask, assuming the economy continues to improve, is to please keep an eye on where the CPI is going when it is time to consider the budget for fiscal year 2023. We both trust and know that you will do your best, the best you can for us, as you have this year. If I may end on a different note, all of us are aware and concerned that COVID, which we had thought we had just about licked, is making a comeback while vaccination rates remain souverently low. AFT members, both at Lone Star College and other school systems across the state, are currently engaged in a letter-writing campaign to Governor Greg Abbott, asking him to simply give school administrators and their boards the authority to make their own decisions about protocols that are needed to keep students and employees safe, including decisions about masking. The request is both for K through 12 and higher education. In accordance with the law, private email addresses are used, and letter writers do not claim to represent their districts. Over 2,000 letters were sent yesterday, the first day of the campaign. We know this is an uphill battle, perhaps a chaotic battle, but we firmly believe that local leaders are in the best position to decide what is needed to keep us safe and are most likely to have the greatest interest in doing so. We hope we will have an impact and that this will give Lone Star College more tools to help us through these times. Thank you so very much for your kind attention.
Thank you, John. Desiree, do we have another speaker?
Yes, Chair, we have one more. Mr. Michael Moats. Link, if you would move him up to the panelist's position, please.
Mr. Moats, you've been moved forward. Please unmute and begin.
Okay, I'll make sure. Okay, there we go. Let me start by introducing myself. My name is Michael Moats. I'm 26 years old. I hold a bachelor's from Tarleton, or I say that, let me backtrack. I have an associate's from Lone Star, a bachelor's from Tarleton, a master's from Liberty, and I'm currently a doctoral student at another university. I'm also a registered behavior technician, a qualified mental health professional in the state of Virginia. I have worked as a behavior therapist, and I was a former journalist in the White House. I'm here to tell you today that you guys should be embarrassed. It's sad that the college has so much disregard for the needs of students who have disabilities and those who want their civil rights protected. This week, I had to file a litigation against LSC because the college is in violation of seven federal, state law statutes and constitutional provisions. This semester, I had a professor who refused to respect the accommodations that I needed. She required us to look at our computer on the screen at the camera for a total of three hours and 20 minutes without the ability to take a bathroom break or drink water. If we looked away from the screen during these three hours, we'd be flagged for cheating. If there was a shadow, such as a cat jumping on a bookshelf, we would be flagged for cheating. I have ADHD and testing anxiety that is documented with the university, and I believe that expecting someone to sit there and look at their screen for three hours is unreasonable for a non-disabled person. The software uses facial recognition and face tracking of students. If you turn the facial recognition off, that is suspect, the professor says in her own words. This is a violation of Texas Business and Commercial Code 503001 without providing informed consent and getting the students' consent and recording them and tracking them using biometric data. Also, by forcing us to download this software, you're coercing us into a contract that we don't necessarily consent to because we're required to consent to the third-party software's terms of service when we download it. So we are coerced by either failing or accepting their terms of service, which we don't necessarily agree with. Also, all the recordings, our grades, personal information is stored on D2L, McGraw-Hill, Respondus, and Amazon servers without our consent. These third-party companies have access to our grades and other information that is protected by FERPA laws, and that is a grudge violation. The professor blamed me for living in Fort Worth, saying, "Have you and having you in Fort Worth is really difficult" when the program was advertised as being completely online. Then the professor discriminated against me by telling me that I would have to schedule my exams with her and coordinate with the testing center and also make sure that they were unlocked prior to the exams. Then she gave me shorter timeframes to complete the exams than other students. I got three days when every other student got two weeks. I made numerous attempts to seek help from disability services and was referred to the department chair. To this day, after numerous emails to the department chair, I have never received a response to date from the department chair. The dean was out sick when all of this was taking place, and the VP who oversaw my case has suddenly been transferred out of his role right after denying my request. So his last act was to deny me without recourse. A member of your general counsel office suggested I appeal with the policies that are in place, with the local policies. But you have to consider that the CSSO, Zach Copeland, is the same VP who denied my previous request, and he would be the one evaluating the civil rights complaint. Also, the individual who could look at the disability services complaint is the same executive director who also I emailed 14 times over these three weeks and have not heard a single response from. This is a denial of due process. Lone Star needs to consider a couple of things. The number of civil and human rights lawsuits filed against you guys in the last 10 years, I found 28 in state and federal court. There is accusations of racism, targeting the disabled, and violations of the Constitution. There are complaints on Facebook and Google, numerous complaints about the college's lack of communication. I fully intend to take my story to the media and show them the video that I have of the professor boasting about failing students and how she is not afraid to target students she believes is cheating, when in reality, she says you will get flagged for cheating if you look away from your screen during a three-hour exam. Not only are you in violation of the ADA Section 504, the biometric laws, but advertising something as a completely online course, then penalizing students because they don't live in Houston and based on disability also falls under the Texas Deceptive Trade Practices Law. Simply creating a law, simply creating a policy does no good if none of the employees are willing to follow it. The disability services provider put these accommodations in writing, but the professor simply didn't care. When you put something in writing, you should follow it. The instructors, the deans, the staff, the leadership have the responsibility to also follow the law and give us the information that we need. Coercing us into contracts that we don't consent to is not ethical or legal. I have a video of the professor threatening the class, but I don't think I have time to share that with you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Dr. Head, can we please look into this and then get back to the board with any comments or updates?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other folks signing up for public comment?
No, Chair, we are complete with public comment.
Okay, so before we move to the next item, just want to make sure, and we know that trustee vote, trustee Sullivan and trusted peers have joined us to make sure that it's on the agenda. Introduction, special guest and recognitions, do we have any?
I don't believe so. Desiree, I don't think we have anybody else, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
No work.
No.
Okay, so the next item is the approval of the minutes for June 21 and the June 24, 2021, for budget workshop. So we're gonna do this separately. I hope everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes for those two meetings. May I have a motion for the June 3, 2021 workshop and regular meeting of the board in a second?
Motion, Sullivan.
Second.
Okay, it's moved improperly. Second, that we approve the minutes of the June 3, 2026 workshop and regular meeting of the board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, may I have a motion and a second for the June 24 for budget workshop?
Motion, Sullivan.
Can I have a second? Again. Thank you. It's moved improperly. Second, that we approve the June 24, 2021 board budget workshop minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Next item is special reports and announcements, Dr. Head.
Yeah, I've got a couple of quick updates here. So I sent the board a note that we sent to employees, and I heard what John had to say. We asked, we are concerned about the new outbreak with Delta variant of COVID. About the time, I thought we were coming out of all this. So we are, I think I've sent you a couple of notes over this. We are requesting, you know, under the governor's executive order, we can't mandate masks, but we are requesting that our students and our employees wear masks and get vaccinations. That's about as much as we can do, and we're putting up signs encouraging people to do that. And we know also that even if you've been vaccinated, you could, I mean, I know that for a fact with a family member, that you could contact, contract COVID, even if you've been vaccinated, but it's not as bad as it would be. So we're keeping tabs on that. We're not ready. Our plans are to have the staff come back on the 23rd, but we're taking a look at this, and we're gonna be taking a really close look at this and see what happens in the next week or 10 days before we make a final decision about what to. It, I mean, I think for the entire country, it couldn't come at a worse time, but we are on this, so. So on the fall in Roma, we actually have some really good news. We've been minus 2% to 5% for the last couple of weeks, but today, for the first time, we're actually on the plus side. We're almost one, we have a 1% increase right now. We budgeted for zero, but you all know, a number of you have pointed out that you've seen our ads and heard them on the radio, TV, seen them in billboards, so we've really been pushing all that. I will say, the colleges have really been reaching out to people. I mean, that's, it's been a joint effort across the system to reach out to our students and make sure they're not only registering, but they're paying also. So we're moving in the right direction. Other good news, really good news is, we received another update from stimulus. We received another 6.1, you can see the number down there, $6.1 million in new stimulus money, which puts our total up to about 215. And we'll have another update in October. The, we don't have the numbers until, because of the way we make the awards, which are after official day, so it will not be in time for the September meeting, but it'll be in the October meeting. But our plans are, remember by the legislation, we're required to spend 50% of that 215, but we're gonna be way above that. We're gonna be in the 75% to 80%. And hopefully, we don't have too many losses. We want to give the money to students, so we'll have a report where you're in detail at the October board meeting. I would like to point out that our financial aid, this is a good sign, our financial aid awards are up. And you can see over there on the right-hand side of that, that we're up 23, almost 2,300, which is really good. That's one of the, if I were using, I mean, we do use metric to see kind of where we are with everything, but that's a good sign that students are applying for financial aid. The trend that I don't care for is the grant applications are up, but so are loan applications. And that's, we, so students are borrowing money. That's not good, I think, over the long term for the students, but at least they're applying for financial aid. Couple of quick state updates is, one, there is more money coming from the state for workforce, and they're still talking about it, and we're in the middle of those discussions. I've been in touch with them a couple, over the last couple of weeks, about how that money is gonna be redistributed for workforce. And some of you know, we're very active and, I mean, we've, we're talking to them about how to distribute that. And so what does that mean? It sounds nice for workforce, but what are you talking about? And we've got several different models that we've been using with county, the state, and at the national level. So we're, we're engaged in these conversations, so the money, I think, will come after. Sometime in the fall, the money will start coming our way for workforce development, and that's really identifying key workforce areas, and the state already has those. And then we pay, the state would pay for the training through the grant, so we'd get people in these training and in the workforce. Lastly, at the federal level, some of you know, I'm actually in Washington right now, but we've heard from Secretary of Education, the Secretary of Labor. We heard from the Joe Biden, who really is running, she's leading some of the community college issue. I will try to keep you informed on the free college issue, because that's been a major issue, but that's not what it appears to be. It is a federal matching proposal, something like a three-for-one. The issue that we know is, I don't think most of the states, half the states, will not fund that like that. So the conversation with us is, so what's the other options on that? If they're gonna make those grants available, then what does that mean exactly? That it's not free. I just want to make that clear, and we told them that, that that doesn't necessarily... The wording on that probably needs to be changed a little bit. It's a little misleading. One thing we're really pushing on is Pell for workforce, short-term workforce students. We have a lot of students in these short-term certifications where they can get a Level 1 certificate, maybe 12 hours. So we've not been able to give them Pell grants before, so we're really pushing on that because we think that's important. The other big issue, there's a lot of money being put aside. We were told today about Secretary of Labor that the federal government's spending $9 billion into workforce training and retraining. So we're taking a look at that also. We've been engaged in conversations with different levels, so we've received some of that money before, but we'd like to receive more of that money so we can help our students. And then lastly, and help our employers, by the way, we had a great meeting this week with our employers about where we are with construction and how they're gearing back up and what the needs and demands are in the Houston metropolitan area, especially when it comes to manufacturing, home building, the chemical industry, and how they're really gearing up. And I will send you a little more information. I know some of you have asked me about this before, but it's just about all of our workforce facilities meet the needs of, I mean, we we anticipated some of this over the long term, and then COVID, it got delayed with COVID, but now it's coming back. So these workforce facilities that we built through the bond that we had, it's really gonna pay off, I think. We do a really good job with that. The last issue that came up, by the way, is broadband access. And so I know the state's getting involved in some of that, but, so the federal government is trying to close that gap. And you think, and I was talking to one of them today, they really focused on rural areas, but I told them some of the urban areas really need broadband access too. Not everybody. We see that in our own system, that not everybody has access to broadband, like you just take for granted sometimes. So that's an important one for us. And in all the budget, you know, we purchased with our stimulus money 6,000 Chromebooks, I think 6,000. We may have some more ordered, I believe we do, and then we're ordering iPads also. We're trying to give all of our incoming students access to a computer. We're basically checking them out. So, and we have the software that goes with that. Ultimately, though, either they do the work with us or they have to go someplace. So if broadband were universally accessible with some reasonable cost someplace or through grants, then I think over the long term, we're really gonna help our students. So I think we're in good shape. I'm really pleased, though, with the way the enrollments are going, and then we're gonna deal with COVID, and I'll keep the board informed over what we're thinking about. So I'm very conscientious about this. My own daughter came down with COVID three and a half weeks ago, and she had been vaccinated, so we know that that's out there. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Head. Members, do we have any comments or questions?
Chair, just for the board comments on the activities?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get in line, if I may. This is Mike Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Will we go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Just two quick comments. One, Dr. Head already mentioned this with respect to enrollment, the positive impact that he believes the advertising has had on it. And I just want the board and the public and Dr. Head and his team to know that several nights a week that I'm watching the news, I do see various Lone Star College commercials. It's not always the same commercial. So they're mixing up the message. It looks good. I think it's being well-received. Dr. Head sent video clips out to board members. I hope that everyone has had a chance to look at those clips, and if not, I would encourage them to, so you can see what we're advertising, pushing out to the community to entice people to register and to look into the programs that Lone Star has. Second, as everyone knows, we have a new president of Lone Star College, Kingwood, Dr. Melissa Gonzalez. She's already been highly visible in the community. She's participated in various virtual meetings. One, this morning, I watched, quote-unquote, "watched" as I drove from Austin to San Antonio, where she participated in what's called BISCOM Kingwood with Partnership Lake Houston. She also accepted an invitation for me to be my guest at Partnership Lake Houston Legislative Update with Speaker, excuse me, not Speaker, State Representative Dan Higberti. And I was able to introduce her around to community members. And what I'm seeing now is that when I introduce her to someone, they are already saying, oh, we've already met Dr. Gonzalez. So she's doing a great job. I want to applaud her publicly, Dr. Head, once you know what's going on in the community, and I'm just pretty proud to be a part of that. Thank you, Chair.
Right.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Do we have any other board members that would like to comment? If not, I do want to get the opportunity to kind of go over real quickly the, I guess, how we're gonna work with us meeting for next month per the governor's executive order. So we're gonna have a in-person board meeting for next month. And so we're gonna continue with that until, obviously, the governor decides otherwise. This is an opportunity for those who are able to join us, and I'm talking about my colleagues, our colleagues. You can join us either virtually or in person, so there's two options for you. As long as I'm there in person in the meeting, you get those two options. So I'll definitely be there in person. Another thing is, as many of you know, trustee Linda Good has stepped down from her position. I think it's in District 7, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And so there is a board vacancy for that particular position, and we will make an announcement, I guess, sometime next week to kind of say how everything's gonna work out, give you a timeline and all that good stuff. Yes, I think. So we'll go ahead and do that. Any questions? All right, hearing none. Yes?
So the new meeting, the next meeting, September the 9th and December the 9th?
That would be an in-person meeting.
Yeah, okay.
September the 9th and December the 9th.
And we'll send out more reminders, just because that's a little off-schedule, but we'll, so we'll send out reminders to everyone.
Yes, and again, folks do have the option to join us in person or virtually.
Right.
All right, moving next to the consideration of the consent agenda. I hope everyone had the opportunity to review the items. I know there's several items that we would want to review independently, so make sure. And bear with me, there's a couple of items, so this is long agenda. See, so we have item number four to review separately. Item number six. Item number 23. 26. 28. And 38 to review separately. If I see any other items that you would like to review separately at this time, please let me know. Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion in a second to adopt items? Let's see, 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17. 8, 19, 20, 21, 22, 24, 25, 27, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, and 37. There we go.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, may I get a motion in a second to consider item number four separately?
Motion.
Okay, it's been moved improperly. Second, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, it's been moved improperly. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
All right, sorry. Yes. Uh, let's, Jennifer, I think we're reviewing item number four, correct?
Yes. Hi, good afternoon, everyone. If we could go to the next slide, please. I do have a few slides. So item number four, I am pleased to present to the board the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget report. We have reviewed the outline of this proposed budget with the board at, there was the board budget retreat back in May, and then the budget workshop at the end of June, again, where we reviewed the outline of this. And from that outline, we're able to prepare the full detailed report, uh, which is about a hundred and twenty pages. Uh, this full report was sent to everyone, uh, last Thursday, a week ago. So I hope everyone had a good opportunity to review it. So if we could go to the next slide, please. Since we have reviewed sort of in some depth, the outline at the prior meetings, right now I just have some highlights of what is in the proposed budget. First, on the revenue side, there is a net increase of eighteen million in revenues. The vast majority of this does come from property tax revenue growth and specifically comes from estimated growth in appraised values. The budget does include and assume a flat tax rate from what Lone Star College has had in prior years, which is ten point seven eight cents. Uh, but still just from the appraised value growth, this is estimated to bring in an additional ten million in revenues. And then, as you can see, the next largest item from there is from the just recently completed state by NIM. Uh, we just see an increase in our state appropriations of four point three million. So those are the major revenue highlights in this proposed budget. Next slide, please. And here is again, just the expenditure highlights included in this proposed budget. Uh, we do have both increases, but then also budget reductions as we continuously review all aspects of the budget. So the net increase is about twenty million dollars. Uh, the largest piece of this going towards new facilities. We have right at Kingwood, a new healthcare building is really close to being completed. I, I think we're estimating a substantial completion date in September. There's also a new student services building going up at Montgomery. And then we are also continuing to fund, uh, new costs at other facilities that have just previously opened, such as the Fallbrook Center. Uh, so that's the seven million. And then of course, and then after that is the compensation increases, which is two percent for all full-time and part-time employees, and then a two dollar increase for adjuncts. And just one additional item as the three largest items listed here is the restoration of the repair and replacement budget, which is for all of the, a lot of the major upgrades and updates that need to continuously happen to all of our buildings. HVAC replacements, air handling units, that sort of thing. This item was cut from this current year's budget due to COVID, but it was intended as a, a one-time cut. That's not something that you want to ideally refrain from for very long. So this budget does include restoration of that. So again, these are the highlights. Next slide, please. So in terms of how this proposed budget impacts our cash reserves is, as I've mentioned before, right in prior monthly financial reports, as soon as COVID hit, we did institute a spending freeze on non-personnel expenditures and a hiring freeze. And with that, we purposely built up this cash reserve to kind of allow us to have these resources going into what, you know, what was and still is sort of the unknown of where, of COVID's impact on us. So between those actions and the federal stimulus funds, we are forecasting to end this current fiscal year, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, at a twenty-one percent cash reserve. This proposed budget does use about five hundred thousand in cash reserves. So the proposed expenditure budget is about that five hundred thousand above the revenues. But this would still forecast us to end fiscal year 2022, which would be August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, at a twenty percent cash reserve. Next slide, please. And then, then to just give a picture of what would happen from here, as I mentioned in building this budget, we've, uh, we've gone through the outlines at that retreat and workshop. Uh, and today, like I said, presenting this proposed budget for the board to consider. And then from here, right, this budget does just assume a flat tax rate. The board will still need to formally set that tax rate. And there is a very formal process from the state that we do need to follow. Uh, and so what happens there is that timeline for setting the tax rate starts as soon as we receive certified tax values from the appraisal districts. Uh, that typically happens around the very end of August. So as soon as that happens though, that kicks off the schedule. Uh, and there's three meetings, actions that has to happen is first, the board has to propose the tax rate, formally propose the tax rate as an action item and set a public hearing. And then we would need to actually have, hold that public hearing, which likely would need to be a special meeting at some point in September. Uh, and then the third action after that would be to adopt the tax rate. Now again, all of those dates are tentative because they all are a function of the actual date that we receive the certified values. Uh, but I wanted to give everyone kind of that visibility into what are the next steps after considering the budget today. That concludes my highlights. Thank you very much. And I do want to say a huge thank you to, uh, the, the finance team here at System Office, but also all of the finance teams throughout the campuses, vice chancellor areas. We spend months working on this budget and almost everybody throughout Lone Star College touches it at some point. So we really truly do put a lot of work into it. And so thank you to everybody out there who helped put this report together for you today.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, everyone who helped out because I know it can be very difficult and very hard and to put everything together. So thank you, Jennifer, for that and your team. Any questions, everyone?
Chair Sal, Sal of our, Mike Sullivan, I've got a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. And this will be for Jennifer or Steve, whoever wants to jump in. Two things, one, we, um, we're set to adopt the budget today. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that would be the action item to vote on.
Yes, ma'am. So once that's done and assuming it passes, then are we kind of cornered on what the tax rate will be? Or will we have any latitude in September to make adjustments and based on the budget and the tax rate? If that makes sense.
Um, from a technical perspective, they are completely different action items. So the board would have at its discretion to, to vote on that tax rate as the board chooses. I, I would just say perhaps it's just done in consideration of what that potential impact may or may not be on this budget as, you know, if adopted today, right? The budget includes an estimated amount of property tax revenue.
Gotcha. Okay. And you're basing that on best information you have from the appraisal districts, even though certified roles are not out yet?
Yes, we receive estimated values from the appraisal districts back in, uh, that was about May, that we received the estimated values. And that's what the numbers in the budget are based off of.
Okay. And historically, those have been close enough that they've not caused problems for you?
Yes, and we actually, to be conservative, have, um, have a one percent sort of margin of error built into those estimates that we received.
Okay, good. And then, Dr. Head, I've got a question for you with respect to philosophy. I don't know that we could do this if we wanted to, but with all of the excess COVID funding we're receiving from DC, can any of that money be put into reserves or is it, are we prohibited from doing that?
We're prohibited. They're, they're sending one update after another about what we can spend the money for and what we can't. Uh, we, we regularly send notes up there going, how about this, what about that? Because some of their guidelines are a little, a little unclear. But we, we clearly, it has to be COVID related. So what it's allowing us to do though, just, just so we're clear, is because we don't have to spend some of our money on COVID operating money, then it allows us to keep our, uh, I, I think, in a healthy financial state right now. And we, we want to stay there because we know that COVID, the stimulus money is, it runs out in twenty-three. So we're looking ahead always. We're trying not to, uh, fit ourselves in something that's just unsustainable over the, over the next couple of years. So.
Okay, that's helpful. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chair Salivar. That's all I got.
Trustee Sullivan, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, uh, may I have all those in favor, sorry, of item number four?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Who was that?
Okay, trustee Pierce, you oppose item number four. Okay. It seems like the ayes have it, so item number four passes. But make sure, let the record show that trustee Pierce voted no for item number four, please. All right, uh, next item number six. May I have a motion to consider in a second, please?
Motion Sullivan.
Second.
Second, Pierre.
Okay. Okay, I think I heard it a second. So it's a first and a second? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, perfect. Questions, number six, or comment?
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, this is trustee Pierce. I just had a question about, uh, some of the title, what is it? Title Four, Developing Hispanic Serving Institutions on the Grants and Trio. I think that's Talent Search. Uh, what I wanted to know is, uh, how are these funds going to be used and for what types of projects and activities? And, uh, is it going to be up to each college to use the funds? You know, since each college got, you know, got some money? Or is it going to be a system-wide protocol? How, I think maybe Jennifer probably could answer that because, uh, you know, I saw her name attached to it. And I'm just wondering, what are those funds going to be used for and the programs? And it's going to be up to each college or are you going to have a system-wide protocol on how it's used?
Sure. Um, Jennifer or Dr. Head?
Uh, yes, so the list attached, uh, so yeah, this shows grants that were already awarded in this past year. And so each grant does have pretty specific guidelines about what it's allowed to be used for. And our applications tend to include the proposal of what the intended plan is. So each one, uh, has an intended plan behind it. And you can see like some of the Title Four and the Trios are tied to specific campuses that worked on those proposals. Um, so what I could get for you after this is more specific details on the particular ones you are interested in knowing what those plans are.
Okay, I'm more, I'm mainly interested in North Harris. You don't have to give me everything. I just want North Harris. Can you hear me? Because my internet is doing some funny things. I don't know if anybody else's is, but, uh, you know, it keeps going in and out. Did you hear me, Jennifer?
Yes, I heard you. So yes, okay, so you would like additional details on the, um, the Title Four Trio Grants for North Harris. I can certainly get that for you.
Yes, yes. I just want to know what they're using it for. Right.
Okay.
All right, um, any other further comments? Hearing none, those in favor, please vote by aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Item number six passes. All right. May I have a motion in a second for item number twenty-three?
So move.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any questions on item number twenty-three?
Okay, I have a question. This is trustee Pierce again. Uh, I'm sorry, we, uh, talked about this, but, um, you have a Yellowstone, let me get back to read what it says. And then you said, if that, am I reading it right on this action item? If Yellowstone doesn't pan out, then we go to, is it Rotola? Am I pronouncing it right? Can you hear me? Jennifer?
The next contract, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, uh, Rotola is the second one. So yeah, the initial chancellor's recommendation asks is for us to negotiate and execute contracts both with Yellowstone and Rotola. It does continue on from there that if negotiations should cease with either one of those, either one of them or both, um, then we can proceed to negotiate.
I have a question, Jennifer, can you hear me? I'm, you know, my computer is still going in and out, but can you hear me? Just show me your hand if you can hear me because it's frozen. All right.
Yeah.
I, uh, I did some research on, you know, on all of these, to take my time. But Rotola, I have a question. Why are we, why are we doing business with, uh, someone that's in out of town? I mean, you know, we're, I'm a taxpayer and you know, I believe in reinvesting money, you know, in my county or my neighboring counties. That's why, why, why do we go out of town to, to, to get Rotola? That, that's, that's my question.
It is not a matter of purposely going out of town. We publicly advertise the, the request for proposals and it is open to anyone to submit. And from those proposals, we do the evaluation of the services and you can, uh, the scoring is provided.
Well, I am a, you know, like I said, I am a firm believer in supporting, you know, our county. And I knew, I, I looked up some of that DITIA and, and I also saw a lack of diversity, which, you know, I, I think that we were moving more toward diversity. But, uh, for those two reasons that, you know, I have a problem with Rotola. That's my opinion.
Trustee Pierce, uh, and Chair Salivar, we've had discussions before about the, uh, with the administration. And, um, Mario, I'm not, well, we probably need to get back with you over this because I'm not sure the law allows us to discriminate on whether they're, even, even though I understand, and we talked about, uh, having a priority with regional or however you want to define it. That's another issue, but I, I'm not sure. I tell you what, we'll let us do some legal work over this and see what the guidelines are. For us, our interpretation before was is that we couldn't limit that, even though that may be a factor in some of the people we're dealing with because we need them locally. Like some of our marketing strategies, by the way, we, we want somebody local who could come out and visit the college. So we can, we'll follow up on that piece of it, see what's allowable or not, then the board can make a decision about that.
Thank you, Dr. Head. Trustee Pierce, uh, any further comments on number twenty-three? Hearing none, can I have?
Are we voting on it?
Yes.
Getting ready to.
Are we going to wait?
No, we're voting on it. Can I have an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. So we have trustee Pierce and trustee Wilson oppose item number twenty-three. The motion, the ayes have it. Thank you. The next in line is item number twenty-six. Can I have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Right, thank you very much. Um, any comments on item number twenty-six?
Move.
Do we have any comments on item number twenty-six?
Um, Madam Chair, I just wanted to know, have we put out other base, this before, uh, other than Atlas or that was that already done prior? I mean, was it done doing, you know, before, you'd already gotten them even before we got here? I'm just saying, how long has Atlas been working, been doing this? Are they part of the bond? That's what I want to know. Were they hired, you know, were they part of the bond contracted with as part of the bond?
Chair, I'm reading my, that.
And no, no, this is, uh, this would be an entirely separate contract, um, uh, for this. So we, it is under a co-op contract. And so a market analysis was completed, um, to make sure that this was the best pricing available through that co-op contract. But this is, there is not, um, if there's contracts for other projects with Atlas, there may be, um, I'd have to go look, but they would be. if there's contracts for other projects with Atlas, there may be, I'd have to go look, but they would be completely separate considerations, those contracts for anything else.
Okay, well, Jennifer, would you do something for me? Just, would you send me a list of the bids that were people, the companies that were bidding with Atlas? I just wanted to see who was bidding.
Yes, I can share with you the market analysis. This one did not, did not work the same as a soliciting bids, because it is through a cooperative contract, the Choice Partners, but I can certainly share with you the market analysis that was completed.
All right.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor, please vote by the usual aye.
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 Those opposed?
Trustee Pierce, nae. I mean, abstain. I don't want to say nay, abstain, till I get my information.
Trustee Pierce abstains from item number 26. The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number 28, can I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion, Sullivan.
All right, comments for item number 28? Do I have any comments for item number 28?
Madam Chair, I think I had said that to you by mistake. Can you hear me? My computer's freezing. Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
I can hear you now. Yes, ma'am. So you don't?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
My computer's freezing off and on, but I think I had put 28 down by mistake. That was me. So that was a mistake, so just take that off the table.
Okay, so let's vote. Those in favor for item number 28?
Aye.
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 Item passes, thank you. Next, item number 38. Can I have a motion and a second? Move.
Well. Motion, Sullivan.
Thank you. Any comments for item number 38?
Yes, Chair, if I may, Mike Sullivan?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I want to publicly thank the Chancellor Evaluation Committee, Chair Barrio, trustee vote, and trustee Kane for their work on the evaluation. Really appreciate their work and doesn't come easy, so good work, committee. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. As a committee, we would love for, we recommend for the ratification and approval of the chancellor's contract. Any further comments? So hearing none, I, those in favor, please vote by the usual aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Those opposed?
Trustee Pierce, nay.
Eric Wilson abstained.
So we have trustee Pierce opposing item number 38, and we have trustee Wilson abstaining from item 38. Is that correct? So, okay.
Wait, Chair, could you clarify that with them individually, please? I understood a vote to be known, so if you could just ask them individually what their vote is.
Eric Wilson, I said, abstain, clearly.
I was asking the chair.
Trustee Wilson?
Abstain.
Thank you, ma'am, and trustee Pierce?
Yes.
Do you abstain? Vote yes or nay?
Nay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you, folks, for bearing with me. It was a long, long agenda, long consensus agenda. So next in line is the, see, a financial report. Jennifer, do we have any financial reports for today?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, I am happy to present a monthly financial report every month. So if we could go to the next slide, this is the report for the month ending June 30th, 2021. So I know what we just discussed on the agenda item was next year's budget, FY '22 budget. That starts September 1st, 2021, so we are still finishing out the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. I might have just said '22. For the next year's budget, so in this current year's budget, still for June 30th, showing you here the revenues as of June 30th, we have collected 375 million so far in actual revenues. This is 99.3% of what had been budgeted. So you can even tell from the line that it's a very good trend, and this is primarily driven by, if you remember, credit hours in this year's budget. We had budgeted them at a decline of 10%. And throughout this academic year, we have done significantly better than that, still a decline, right? But we declined by around 4% to 4.5% over the course of the whole year. So a decline is certainly never a good news, but that is still significantly better than the 10% decline that we had built into this current year's budget and the estimated revenues. So with that, the revenues coming in should continue to exceed prior year's trends. Next slide, please. And then on the other side of that equation, on the expenditures as of June 30th, we had spent 275 million expenditures or 73.7%. And here too, we had continued, as I mentioned earlier, the spending freeze on non-personnel expenses. We continued that through a good portion of this fiscal year, and we continued the hiring freeze throughout this entire fiscal year. So between those two things, actual expenditures also are trending below prior years. Next slide, please. So just sort of the trend that you could see in those charts, in numbers on the budgets, the budgeted revenues for this year was 377 million, and we are estimating a positive variance to that of 6.2 million, so 6.2 million in addition to the 377 that had been budgeted. Next slide, please. And then on the expenditure side, we had budgeted 373 million in expenditures, and we are estimating to spend 7.6 million less than that budget with a lot of the savings that we have achieved throughout the year. And as I mentioned in some of the earlier presentation, that, so we are estimating this fiscal year to end cash reserves at the end of this month at 21% of the budgeted expenditure. Next slide, please. Yes, and then also included in your report is just an update on buildings and ground construction projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer, for the presentation. Colleagues, any comments on that?
Trustee Salivar, if I could, I just want to, board, I think the board already knows this, but Jennifer and her team has been difficult.
Mr. Head, I think we are not, I think your connection is failing.
Your time is up.
For the public, we've been having issues with connections, so I apologize. Jennifer, we just want to really thank you for the work that you've done and your team. I know that it's really difficult and it's a lot of work to put everything together, so thank you so much. And we appreciate you keeping us in good condition in regards to the budget, so thank you.
Thank you, absolutely, my pleasure.
Well done.
Board members, any, let's, any comments on the financial report before we move on to suggested future agendas? Hearing none, anything for suggested future agenda items? Right, just want to thank everybody for joining us today. Thank you, colleagues, for joining us. And if I don't hear anything, so it's 4:12 PM, and so let's adjourn this meeting.
Good job, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good job, everybody. Thank you.
You're good.